Everybody should get the dialogue.
We're recording.
Okay.
Okay, call the order of all city council work session for September 1st, 7/11. Roll call please.
Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Council Jerris.
I'm here.
We see. Council Stratus.
Here.
Council Drive.
Here.
And Myers.
Council Myers.
I'm here.
Okay, everybody's all accounted for. This is a work session as well for the city council receive background information on city business that we give council members an opportunity to ask question and express their individual views. All decisions are made and no votes are taken on any intended item. The public is invited to attend, however, there's generally no public comment period. We'll go through all the work session, after that, we have a special session to cover a topic. And we'll go on from there. The first item of the work session is the downtown paving and utility improvement project change orders. Mr. Miller, please.
Okay, we have this first item, we have two change orders for the downtown project. And I'm going to let Max and Matt and or Eric talk through these, but we have two change orders that need to be looked at, discussed and approved. Max.
Oh, I don't think we're gonna be able to hear Eric or Matt right now. Hey, Matt, can you, you guys can hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Yeah, see, we can't hear their audio, so it's all right, just hit your volume button on the keyboard.
Sorry.
Okay, Matt. Can you hear me?
You hear me? You hear me? You hear me? You hear me? You hear me?
I think, I think, I think, I think. I think the three of you together are gonna have to mute.
Yeah, we're all muted, but I think it's the out.
Okay, I'm gonna shut down one of these computers, just in case it's feeding back. Okay, try it now.
Hello? Okay.
That's a little better.
We got you, Matt.
Okay, Max, did you want to introduce the change orders, or do you want me to kind of talk about what they are?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So, one, one of the change orders is due to the sidewalk alongside the high school fence. Originally, it was, it was just supposed to go up to the fence. After talking with the high school, they said that their new, new standards were that there had to be a mow strip, which is a concrete strip below the fence. So, we just extended the sidewalk one foot in order to be able to go underneath the fence. So, now the fence will sit inside the actual concrete sidewalk. This is gonna make them, make it a lot easier for them to mow, and was a request that the school district made. So, that was one of the change orders. The, uh, Max, what was the, the other change order was?
The second one was for additional valves and additional.
Oh.
And fire hydrant.
Yeah, thank you, Marcia, the, the, the second change order was, was at the connection points on, on Moss and Pioneer, replacing the valves they were connecting to because those valves were, were old. And when we were out there, you know, Max looked at those and determined that those were not, that this would be the right time to replace them. And in fact, as, as they were making the connection on Lakeview, and I guess Moss, none of the three valves that were there were operational. And so, they had to actually shut down a little bit more of the, of the customers from water for, for a couple hours, hours as they were making that connection. So, it really was the right time to, to be making these changes in terms of the valving. So, those are the two different change orders that, that are in front of you today. Additional valving and then additional sidewalk width, you know, alongside the high school fence.
Any questions?
I keep hitting the, the camera. So, we, I think what I read was the funding was coming out of the, where was it coming from? It was water.
One of the change orders, the change order number two is coming out of the water fund. And the expenses for change order number three are coming out of the street fund.
And we're prepared for that, I mean, there's no, I mean, the funds are there. Did we kind of plan this? In case we had change orders?
So, I mean, some change orders. I'm sorry, no, you're right. Can you guys hear me? Okay, so some of the change orders, you know, like we talked about in the beginning, there's gonna be change orders, so some stuff was planned. And then some stuff come up, so the, for example, the sidewalk project, it is a little above and maybe not what we expected. So, this was brought to our attention after the proposal and everything. We do have the funds available to cover it. But this, like Matt said, this is, this resolves two things. So, one, we were gonna originally move the fence on the south side of the school, two feet into the school property, to be able to do the work and to allow for that. So, one, that keeps the fence in the existing area, and it expands the sidewalk an additional 12 inches. And what it'll do is it'll encompass the fence posts. The school district standard is to have mow strips under the fences now. So, we'll get a wider sidewalk out of it, which is a benefit to us, but it also will, you know, establish the mow strip under the fence for the school. That was one of the requests they made, so this, this would be the change order if we were to approve that work. As far as the other change order, like Matt said, so the valves, one set of valves, there was actually still abandoned valves from a previous upgrade in, in line. So, this just cleaned it up and made it more necessary. We did eliminate an additional set of valves on the Pioneer side because we already had new existing valves in place. So, the additional valves would actually be the ones on the Lakeview and Moss side. And those are the ones that Matt mentioned that we actually could not isolate at all. We tried for three days with the contractor and ourselves, and without physically, you know, maybe busting the house, we were not able to isolate the, the area that we were making the new connection to. So, we actually ended up pulling a whole street over and shutting off a lot more customers. So, after some discussion, we talked and we, and we thought it'd be best to go ahead, where I mean, we're already there, the road's gonna be tore up, to take advantage of this, rather than, let's say, we got the road done. And, you know, even a couple years after this, we have an issue where we have to dig those up. So, we'd be digging the brand new road up, and it was just an appropriate time. We're already running new service lines for everybody, so wanted to try to keep it nice and clean. Also, on, I, I think it's labeled change order three for two, which ones? The street one was?
The, the street one is, uh, is two.
So, change order two, a few other things on there.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, three.
Three, yeah. Besides the valves, there was some additional pot holding. That's where the contractor verifies what's under the ground before they start digging, which is smart for us. So, there were some lines that were failed to mark on some of the communication lines. They went ahead and verified there, and there was also some additional pot holding to make the new connections on the valves that we went ahead and switched. Additionally, there was a fire hydrant that was installed for the school, school project after all this work was approved and we decided to go with Wildish. So, there's, on the change order, you'll see a fee for the pot holding, but also a fee to reconnect the hydrant. So, they had to buy a new six inch tee, if there's some costs associated that, but that weren't planned. So, a new valve, new tees, new pipe. So, all the stuff on the change order regarding the pot holding and the water lines, with the exception of the valves that we went ahead and changed, they were necessary. They, they had to do it to do the work they were doing. So, I hope that answers your question, Gil.
Yeah, it does. I, I just, you know, just thought it was good to kind of understand it. I mean, it all makes sense. Certainly makes sense to take care of something now, rather than dig it up later, I, at least as far as I'm concerned. So, that's great, just, just wanting to understand the finances, so, cool, thank you. Was there not a different, like a benefit change order that you mentioned, I believe, last meeting, that there was something less had to be done than you thought? So, that was, leave a little money?
Yeah, so on that change order, the change order regarding the streets and the water line, if you look at the very bottom, there are some things in parentheses. So, that was work that was originally in the bid, so that would be the valves I was telling you guys about on the far east side. So, there's actually a new line installed on Pioneer, so those sets of valves there were new, so it wasn't justifiable to replace. So, that kind of washed the valves that we added on the west side of Maine. And then the same was true for Moss Street, but we had planned to put those valves in on the original work. So, those, the ones on the west side are additional, just because, you know, we were gonna use the existing, but that wasn't a possibility. So, yeah, if you look, there's the charge, and then at the bottom, there's actually where they're, I believe it's in parentheses, I don't have it in front of me, apologize, but that's where they're taking out of that change order, giving us credit. So, there's some materials, there's, there's a few things in there where they're actually, I mean, they're not giving us money back, they're just not charging us as much to do that work, yeah. So, without those credits, that change order would obviously be more, yeah. Any other questions?
Well, so with all of them, we're looking at 30,000, 31,000 total, right?
Yeah, it's, it's somewhere pretty close to there, yeah.
What was our contingency plan on it?
What's that, John?
The contingency plan, what did we have that set at? 15, 20%?
I thought it was 15, I, I don't remember exactly. Don, do you remember what, what kind of contingency we put in there?
Which is well within the standard anyway, so we're good.
Oh, we, we put something in there, I, I don't remember exactly what it was, John, but we did put a contingency in the, in the plans of this, so. One thing also, I'd like to bring up, I, I did talk to Marcia about it, so the sidewalk job, obviously, you know, we're doing it because of the school, so I have tried to reach out. I mean, they're kind of busy with school starting today, and at least see if maybe they want to pitch in a little bit on that, get their opinion on it. It is a mow strip for the school. It, it's appropriate since we're here, so if they were to do it later, it's still a cost savings to the school. So, I'm gonna run it by them, I don't think it hurts to try, if it's something that, you know, that you guys agree that we should do. So, but yeah, I just wanted to.
Definitely run it by Johnny.
Yeah.
We'll take anything.
Yeah.
It can hurt to ask, I don't think we're not gonna do it if they, you know, say no, or you can't.
It is, and it's a benefit for the city. I, I would let you guys know that the door that need to be relocated on the wood shop and the vent that need to be raised in order for the sidewalk job, the school did pay for that fully. City had no cost on that, so I appreciate that, they didn't gripe at us or anything about that, so. But yeah, it's a, we have a pretty good relationship on the project, so.
So, now that we've kind of gotten through this part, do you think we're kind of good and the rest of it should just go as planned, or, or could we face some other change orders coming up?
There will probably be other change orders, I mean, that's kind of the nature of these projects. But they should be hopefully balanced in both savings and extra costs.
So, there's, there's definitely gonna be, and Matt, Matt discussed this in the very beginning, there's definitely gonna be a materials change order at the end. Because until they get in there and do the work, you know, they're just estimating quantities of fill and, and blacktop and stuff. And Jared brought that up too in the very early, early stages, so there's gonna be a quantities at the end for some stuff. I don't see anything else coming up, but you never know until you get into a job, if, you know, if a sidewalk accidentally gets broke or something, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, but can't really predict it. But as far as right now, I mean, these, these are things, like I said, that need to be necessary to even start the water line project, the pot holding. It's good that they verified that, if they just started digging, then we have a much larger repair on our hands, such as a water line. They did find a storm line the city didn't know about. So, the pot holding, and then, like I said, the valves, those were necessary. Of course, the fire hydrant that was installed, you know, after this work had started, that was an unforeseen cost, and you guys can see on the breakdown, you know, they're, they're being, being pretty fair to us on the price. The actual tee for those are pretty expensive. So, I, I think they're, they're being fair and working with this. Would you agree, Matt? I think they're trying their best.
Yeah, I, I think so. I, I do know that there's gonna be, you know, at, at the very end of any unit price job, there's a, there's a, a change order at the very end that, that just totalizes all the, all the quantities. The, the, the bid is, is based on estimated quantities, and then at the end, you actually measure everything that they've done and pay them based on that. And so, there's a, a change order associated, and sometimes it's, it's up and sometimes it's down. I, I do know that, that the, the pavement on Lakeview, I think, was, there, there was a strip of it that, that we assumed was gonna be still good pavement. And that's based on the, on the pavement preservation plan that we did like two years ago. I think by the time this started, that pavement had, had deteriorated, so they're gonna do a little bit more of the, of the full dig out and replacement of the pavement than what was shown on the plans. But, but that's, like I said, just a quantity adjustment at the end. So, they're, 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 they're not being able to change the, change their prices, just the quantities associated with the work that they're doing.
Pioneer driving by, I don't see any open trenches. Have they finished a lot of this work, or they dug down and then refilled it with gravel to really dig, dig it back out, or what's the?
Yeah, so, excuse me, what they're doing on the water line is they're excavating, placing the line, and backfilling at the exact same time. So, while they're actually actively doing the work, you know, 20 to 40 feet is open at a time, and then the end of each day, you know, they make sure they backfill gravel and they're putting plates over if we do leave anything open. So, yeah, they're, it's pretty crazy, they're digging everything out, getting rid of material, laying the new pipe, and backfilling it all at once. So, it's all just happened continuously as they work down. So, both the water lines are installed as of today.
So, the change orders, are they gonna have to re-dig again, or?
No, no, so they're just the one dig, put the new main in, we're gonna leave the old main in, we're gonna abandon it in place. So, it'll be cut at both ends, and it, it'll stay in the ground. Okay. It's already compacted, it's got backfill around it, so. The change orders that Matt was discussing could be like, like to come up with digging, so maybe more asphalt, or maybe road base, once they get in there to actually repair the road. Or maybe they, maybe they thought the trench was gonna be three feet, but we end up on four feet. So, there's gonna be, you know, that little bit more three quarter minus backfill at the end, or, or something along those lines, yeah.
So, what I'm seeing here for the change orders, this is work that's already been done, I take it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the exception of the sidewalk, which I believe is change order two, I think.
Because, yeah, because what, what I'm looking at it, uh, uh, I like saying you drive by, it's always covered up and everything. I didn't know if they covered it up, and then we're gonna do the change order, they're gonna dig everything, where the, where the valves go and everything, they'll re-dig that back out, put the valves in, and reseal it again.
Right.
But then it's, it's open and covered right now, right?
So, the valves are already installed, the, the ones we talked about changing because the other ones didn't work. So, the valves are installed, and they're not permanent because they have to pave and reset the valve risers. But all the work that's on that change order has already been completed, with the exception of the fire hydrant, because they have to wait, because that's the school's fire protection. So, once the line is live, which we're doing tomorrow, then that work, but we know what's gonna happen, so he put it on the change order.
Are the people without water over there?
Nobody's without water, so we got the old line still in service, right? And then the new line.
Next to it.
Only the new line on Maine has been cleared by results to be able to put in service. So, we switched everybody over on Maine today, and then tomorrow, we'll put it live, live, and abandon the old one. And then same thing on Lakeview, it's installed, they're running service lines now. They'll do a pressure test, check for leaks, chlorinate it, let it sit for a period of time, we'll take the bacteria results. And then once we get to clear from that 24 hours later, we're good to put it in service, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Eric. Is there more that they need to be careful?
Um, I don't think so, Marcia.
I don't think so.
Yeah, thanks, Matt and Eric, you guys can hang out or, or jet or whatever, I appreciate you guys taking the call.
Sure, you guys don't need us back for the, for the regular, or for the, for the other meeting, do you?
Don, no, I think you guys are good.
Okay, you guys have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, all right.
Next up is financing for acquisition of 205 and 298 East Main Street. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, this is just an update on timing for you. I think when we met last, I thought that the closing for this property was gonna be the 31st, which would have been, would have been done. But there was a little hiccup on the bank side with the loan documents. When we received them, there was an error, and so they've had to take them back again and fix the error, which they say they are doing. They had put in that we were paying principal and interest, which meant a difference of, instead of a thousand, we thought a thousand and some dollars in month, it was 13,000. So, that would be a bit of a shocker. But anyway, they're reworking them, they acknowledged they had a, some transition in the bank, and there was a miscommunication. So, it looks like right now, the closing is supposed to happen on the 10th of September. That's when it's been rescheduled, so that's just an update, just so you know, we're not there yet.
Any, any questions on that? That's a good catch.
Yeah. Yeah.
Max, I got a question regarding that work that they're doing on the intersection of West Boundary and Wetlow and Maine. Um, did we ever think, I noticed that there, one of the big reasons that has a drop there is because of the level of the storm drain that's down there. Did we ever think about asking them to put a riser on that storm drain so that we didn't have such a severe drop from our property into the right of way that's there? I, I know they've been pulling that up, I've been seeing some, some, uh, some of the manhole parts down there. If, if we could talk to the county about putting a riser in there, it, it would, it would make our property gain some value in terms of not having that drop, that extreme drop that goes down from the level of, of the property the city's attaining down to the property in the right of way where the bottom of that storm drain is in there.
Did you direct that at me, Tim?
Yes.
No, I didn't answer that.
That, that, I don't know that, uh, I know that the county was involved with doing the work, and they coordinated with Jared and with Johnny Matthews on where, where, what work, where the work was to be done. But as for actually the details of the work, I don't think that was, was. That was the county completely on their own doing that. We, you know, they, they submitted for us, and they picked up the, uh, our percentage we're supposed to pay, so the whole thing was funded by them. So, I think in that way, they, they were the, they had total charge and something like that. I don't, I don't think we were 100% aware of, of what all they were gonna do. We understood the principle, we understood the idea, but functionally, each step and things like that, I don't know that Jared was even aware of everything. But you're right, it would have been better to level that out in some way, but right now, they're just following pretty much the contour of the earth, I believe.
Well, it, they're, they're still in progress, Don, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate for Max to go just have a talk with the foreman on the job there and, and discuss what we're talking about and just investigating this and, and taking, you know, 10, 15 minutes and just running down there and talking. I know you're having conversations with those guys.
Jared and myself actually did have a conversation in regards to that. You're talking about the one that sunk way down?
Yeah, so behind the curb that they're putting in, you know, they re-paved the curb, did the sidewalk there, and I know they're gonna, they, they've done some work on that, that storm drain itself, the parts are sitting there, and they may be doing more. But yeah, that one, it's, and that's the low point, that's what determines and causes that big drop off, is that, that lowest, that lowest spot on the storm drain.
So, that is still well within the county right of way on that lot? So, Jared did bring that up, that we actually had a meeting for the next phase of this, and, and one of the things that we had discussed was reducing the right of way and making the, the actual soon-to-be city lots much larger and closer to the road, you know, not a huge 30 foot setback. So, I don't remember the gal's name at, at the city, that, or county, I'm sorry, but she was looking into that. They did send us some plans over that, that Marcia approved for the next phase of the project. I do know that it was included in that. I don't know if it was included in this, just because of the sheer amount of volume of fill that would go into it. But it did come up, we were on a common call right where Jared left on that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that Becky Taylor?
Becky, thank you.
Becky Taylor.
Yep, Becky Taylor. Thomas on the call, yeah.
Thomas was the other one. Now. Okay. Next up is financing with Business Oregon for the downtown paving utility improvement and discussion of Resolution 747 that establishes payment in lieu of franchise fee for water and sewer utilities. Mr. Miller, please?
Okay, right before Jared left, he was going back and forth with Business Oregon on trying to get this loan approved. And they had, they had received a pro forma, and right after Jared left, well, about mid-August, I received a communication that was forwarded to me from Business Oregon stating that in the pro forma, we didn't meet their debt ratio requirement. So, they had suggested that we rework it and look at the possibility of raising our water rates, which my inclination was, nobody likes to have water rates raised any more than they are anyway. So, we looked at the possibility of, instead of raising rates, decreasing our expenses. I got together with Lainey and talked to Jared on the phone actually about this, and what we came up with as a possible solution, so this is what I'm bringing to you tonight for your feedback, is a little odd because it's basically rescinding the resolution that you passed in June to establish the fee in lieu of franchise fees for the utilities. I, because I wanted to make sure that this might even work for the bank, we drafted a new pro forma, which is in your packet, sent it off to Business Oregon and asked them if this looked like it met their requirements, and they said that it did. The permit in lieu of franchise fees was something the city's never had before. It hasn't been collected, there hasn't been any action on it to date. Rescinding that resolution doesn't really preclude you from doing it in the future. We're doing it later this, this budget year, or even next budget year. But it was a possible solution to getting our financing approved, so I wanted to bring it to you to see if, in fact, that's something you would like us to move forward with. And if so, I could bring it back, I could bring back basically a resolution to rescind the resolution at your next regular council meeting. I attached, just for your information, the email between Business Oregon and myself, and also the revised pro forma that they had a chance to take a look at. And so, you'll see that they did say that this would meet their, their requirements. So, any questions, concerns, discussion?
Is this the application for the water meters and all of that, or what's this for?
This is the funding for the project we are.
That we're doing out here now?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the water portion of it.
The water portion, okay.
The street's covered by.
Okay.
Does that all make sense?
Yeah, I just, we have so many balls in the air, I'm not sure which one I'm talking about sometimes. But this has to do with the water on Maine and Lakeview, correct, the water lines?
Yeah.
Funding for that, okay. All right, anybody have any questions for it? My thought is, uh, if it makes it easier to get the loan and that, the rate and everything, I, I'd say we bring it back at the end of the month to, to look at rescinding it. That'd be my thought, and we can, uh, vote on it, look at it then, and see if that's the direction we wanna go, so, if you wanna do that, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I agree. No, I agree, let's get it going, deal with it later, get the ball rolling.
Yeah, like I said, it doesn't really preclude you from doing it in the future. We wouldn't want to do it right away, that would look a little odd.
Yeah, next week's fine, that's fine.
Take it out, make it, can, can we just not fund it? Less, you know, say rescinding the whole thing, or does it require, once it's a resolution, it has to be funded? I don't know, can we just unfund?
I think we.
It might be easier to rescind. It might be easier to rescind the whole darn thing and start over.
The proper thing to do to rescind-
And start over. Okay, good. All right. That makes more sense to me, too. Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, item four, update on election filings.
Um, all of the materials have been hand-delivered to the Lynn County Elections Office, and, um, we only have those applications from those of you that are running, so, well, been turned in.
Everybody, you won.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's good or bad.
There's always the right hands.
Well, that, yeah.
The right hand.
There, there, there always is some. I know the last time I ran unopposed and, and it was, it was, it lost like twenty votes, and it was kinda, you know, I don't know, it's, I just thought it was unique and funny, but the, uh, the good thing about this is that, uh, like in, uh, going ahead, and when we're looking for a city administrator to come in, they don't have to wait till November third to see, you know, who, who's gonna be on the council. They can go back and look at some of the minutes and the active actions and things we've taken in the past, and they, they know the people that they'll be dealing with, so this, this is a real, I think, a benefit for the city, so. Thank, thank you to everybody for, uh, signing up again for another tour.
Is that good or bad that they know who we are? No, no, Tim, it's bad. It's bad.
We're assuming it's good.
Okay, we, this was asked for our last time, uh, last meeting, and, uh, so number five here is an update on the Maggie Osgood Library.
Yeah, yes, it's just a little update.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think, yeah, it was asked about at the last meeting by one of our, um, folks who were here at the meeting. The, um, you know, the original project for, for moving the library and temporary city hall into the, um, into the Maggie Osgood, this building was for, um, three hundred thousand dollars. We, we only have about a hundred thousand dollars right now. We've received, we have the ninety thousand dollars that was set aside for the project, and we've received about eleven thousand dollars in donations. Um, I put a little plug in, uh, in the Bridge newsletter for, for kind of maybe getting some interest in, in more donations. We're still waiting, we're waiting on the Ford Foundation grant. And I've checked in with Jared, and, um, I think, we're, we're, we're just waiting. We'll, we'll have to see what the outcome of that grant is. Um, if we don't get the grant, of course, then we'll need to bring it back for discussion on either adjusting that original project, or, you know, doing something different. Um, you know, there, there will be more option, you know, there'll be options that you need to consider at that point, but that's basically the update. Hopefully, we'll get a few more donations. Um, getting the donations from the community is just a help in making us, you know, in a better position for that, you know?
Any questions by anyone? Thank you. Any questions?
Not participating.
Okay. Number six, upcoming executive session with Ross Schultz on recruitment.
Yeah, so I did get confirmation from all of you for the executive session next Tuesday. Um, uh, there, uh, several have said they would like to come in person. It's an exec session, so there will be no public. Um, I haven't heard from a couple of you, so I'm not sure what your preference is. Um, we could always do Zoom, um, for those, or if everybody wants to come in person, we will just record that session. We won't do a Zoom meeting, because we won't publish a Zoom meeting anyway. Um, so, uh, I can, you know, wait to hear back from you, but at that session, um, I've been going back and forth with Ross a little bit, sending drafts, some, you know, so you will have some information to look at in your packet for that exec session. You'll have a flyer, a draft. It's all draft at this point, but something for you to give feedback on. A timeline, a draft of the flyer, a draft of the posting, and then a discussion on the salary range and some other things. The goal and the hope is if we can, um, get some things resolved at that meeting, that the position would be posted the middle of September. So we'll be going forward, so, you know. Any questions?
And I think that we held in City Hall, right? The meeting?
We'll, we'll probably hold it here.
Okay. I saw it said council room and like-
Oh, yeah, I meant here. We, we will hold the meeting here in the library.
I think somebody else had a question.
Um, I was going to ask if we needed to have you, Marcia, look at any, um, like when we hired Jared, where we started the salary. Uh, I mean, it may need to be up a little bit. That was five years ago, but, um, I don't know, maybe, maybe just to give us some background on where we started in the past.
Sure. Yeah, I can bring that, and I also, um, I also found there was a salary comparison too that was done at some point, and I can bring that information.
Yeah, just so we have some good information to make a good decision on that, and, and make room for, you know, um, raises. But we also want to start at that place, so.
Okay, so that's next Tuesday, seven o'clock here, right?
Seven o'clock here.
Okay.
Um, so if the folks who I haven't heard from yet, if you could let me know whether you want to be here in person, or, um, or you'd like, or you prefer to do it in person.
I'll go in person.
Put the tables back.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do social, if, if it isn't, we'll definitely do social distance.
Oh, I can come in. That's no problem.
Well, I think it's important enough that we actually show up.
Well, I, I think too, maybe with looking at drafts and, you know, we just, we just might need a little more face-to-face on that than-
I agree.
I see head nods.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. At least we won't have these technical difficulties.
Okay, before we adjourn the, uh, work session, we have any other, uh, comments, thoughts, or anything like that?
I apologize for being late.
No.
Well, until you mentioned it, you weren't really noticed. We just, uh, we were all, uh, we're all like a little, uh, bee hive here with things going in circles, so. So, we were just glad to have you.
Good.
Okay, then we're adjourned at seven forty-eight from the work session.
Thank you, everybody.
We have another meeting?
Don't leave yet. Don't leave.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We're going into special meeting now.
Now we're gonna have a special meeting, so.
What?
Next up is the, uh, special meeting, uh, for September first at seven forty-eight. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Bennett?
Yeah.
Counselor Myers?
I'm here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Stratus?
Present.
Counselor Drat?
Here.
Good to have us all.
No one's left.
Next up is approval of the agenda. There's only one item. Anybody else have anything they wanna add? Not hearing or seeing. Do we have any public comment yet? Okay, not seeing any. Uh, we have one, uh, new business item change order for the downtown paving and utility improvement project. Ms. Miller?
Yes, this is the, of course, the item that you discussed in your work session. Um, the city, uh, needs to take action on these two change orders from Wildish Construction. The change order number two was for the additional valves and the additional pothole work and fire hydrant. Change order three, uh, which is mistyped on your attachments, by the way, so, um, I think from Wildish had two twos, is for extending the sidewalk a foot on Lakeview and also for the fence work. The change order for number two is fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and thirteen cents. The change order for number three is fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And as stated, um, before, the expenses for change order two will be paid out of the water fund, and expenses for change order three will be paid out of the street fund.
Okay. Do we have questions? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve change order number two and number three from Wildish Construction.
Okay.
As written.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have further discussion for change orders number two and number three for Wildish? Any further questions, discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor of motion to approve change order number two for Wildish Construction for fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars as presented, and motion to approve change order number three for Wildish for construction for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty as presented? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We missed the pledge of allegiance, so we'll, we'll pick it up next season. So. Unless somebody wants it. Okay, anything else? Anybody? I don't have mayor comments. I don't have anything. Uh, for as I'm concerned, we can adjourn. Do you have anything? Oh, okay. Anybody have anything?
Thank you again.
For adjourned at seven fifty-one.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
I've done that before. Pledge of allegiance. Keep it right past it.
Well.
This time I remembered it, though. Usually, I'm reminded by people after the fact.
Oh.
Life is good.